Good evening. I want to welcome you to the October 18th, 2023 regular meeting of the Planning Commission. I'd ask the, well, I guess I've already read item one. So item two, Mr. Clark, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Gribble-Unis.
Here.
Commissioner Kettner.
Commissioner Buckley.
Here.
Commissioner Kolkmeier.
Here.
Commissioner Furman.
Here.
Commissioner O'Neal.
Here.
Commissioner Peters. You have a quorum.
Thank you. If you could read item number three, please.
Item number three, other legislative matters, accessory dwelling units, regulation.
Thank you. So as everyone will recall, back in April of this year, we got a council request for the Planning Commission to examine and suggest removing barriers such that ADUs might be more likely to be built. And we have been looking at those regulations. We had a study session back in August. We had a regular meeting on October 4th where we took public comments and had a lively discussion and a number of proposed motions related to a draft resolution. And now we have before us today a draft resolution that hopefully reflects what we did discuss at the last meeting. That, of course, has been publicly available on Lakewood Speaks, and we did receive some comments on that as well. I do not see anyone in the council chamber is here to provide additional public comments. So that was the first thing, to open that opportunity. But without anyone here seeking to provide additional public comment in person, I will close public comments, and we will move on to commission discussion. So my suggestion, but of course, it's always the will of the body to determine what you'd like to do, but I would suggest that we work off the draft resolution. And to the extent that anyone has suggested changes or amendments, let's propose those and discuss them. And I'm certain there are going to be some changes that we may want to consider. And I have a few of my own, the more I've thought about it. But I guess at this point, I would open it up to any commissioner who would like to kick off this discussion. Commissioner Buckley.
Thank you. I had a question about number two. Under A, we revised the language in this red line to say waivers are allowed only if approved in conformance with section 17.2.6.4A. Last time, we had a discussion about not just waivers, but also variances. And so I think the section of code you cited there in the red line is referring to the process where waivers go to the Planning Commission. We're not talking anymore about variances. So I was just wondering if this is sufficiently clear to achieve what we intended, that waivers will be a planning commission hearing, no matter the circumstance. And variances are like variances for everything else. If it's minor, it's administrated by staff. If it's major, it's by the Board of Adjustment.
Yeah, so that may be, I think, Commissioner, you're seeking confirmation maybe from Mr. Rice, that the intention of the way it was drafted was to make it clear that all waivers would still have to come to the Planning Commission, whether major or minor, they all would have to come here. And that's what that section 17.2.6.4A does. And then the removal of the variances would, I believe, but I want to get Mr. Rice's opinion on that, would leave variances like they would be in any other circumstance where there are minor and major ones. But they wouldn't all have to come to the Plan Commission.
And I would agree with that. Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. That language didn't turn out exactly like I was expecting it to, but I think, yeah, I can see how it does the same thing that I was expecting. So I'm happy with that.
And if you have a thought about another way to do it, we can certainly discuss it, but that was the intent. Are there any proposed amendments, changes, deletions, additions, that anyone else would like to talk about? Commissioner Buckley?
Yes, for the parking requirements, that's down on the second page of the draft. So I thought about this in several ways the past two weeks, once I had time to think about it more and wasn't trying to craft language up here during a meeting. Most of this language is words that I cobbled together in the last meeting at the spur of the moment without expecting I'd be doing it exactly. So I don't like the way two things turned out. We'll start with a simple thing. If there are, we had an exception, if there are posted no parking signs in front of the property, we should probably clarify that those are official no parking signs that are applicable in front of the property, as opposed to some sort of clandestine middle-of-the-night citizen having some sneaky ideas. It's got to be an official sign posted by the city. So I'm not sure exactly how to change the language, but I'll offer a motion that we say an official, an officially sanctioned no parking zone. See, I move that we add the words official, officially posted no parking signs by the city.
Officially posted no parking signs.
Or some better language that achieves that effect.
And perhaps, City Attorney, if you, you had some thoughts on that, maybe you could suggest a way to clarify that.
Yeah, certainly. And if the commission, you know, wants to modify or change this further, that's certainly fine with me. One, one thought I had was that under Title 10 in our municipal code, we refer to all official signs as official traffic control devices. The distinguishing factor is that on the back of the signs, there's a small square that actually has a number, and it's, and it's basically designates that this was put there by the city of Lakewood, and that we can track them and things like that. So we refer to those as official traffic control signs. So I think, and obviously, feel free to change this, but one proposed option is that you could designate this as saying that off-street parking, off-street parking will be, excuse me, off-street parking or street parking will be deemed unavailable if there are official traffic control signs posted in front of the property. So that's one, one option.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that? What was it?
Yes. There are official traffic control signs.
Official traffic control signs.
Posted in front of the property. And then if you, if you would like to take it a step further, I don't know that you have to, but if you'd like to, you could also add language stating prohibiting parking where street parking would normally be located. But that's, might be too wordy. It's sort of further, it may not be necessary, but.
I like your more elaborate version.
Let me restate this and see where we are. Why is permitted? So that section could read, "Or if there are official traffic control signs posted in front of the property prohibiting parking where otherwise permitted."
Yeah.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Then I guess I'd ask for a vote on that. And I think we're able to use our voting system. Let's try it. Yes for approve, and no. Are we open?
And just for clarification, the votes will not be displayed in chambers, but they will be displayed in Zoom, and Commissioner Kolkmeier will be able to see it. So if you are voting yes, you would press the yes button.
I'm afraid it's not logging. I'm going to do it the old-fashioned way. Do a roll call if you don't mind.
Okay, I'll do roll call. Commissioner Gribble-Unis.
Yes.
Commissioner Buckley.
Yes.
Commissioner Kolkmeier.
Yes.
Commissioner Furman.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neal.
Yes.
You, the motion passes.
Thank you. Are there any other changes to that section while we're on it? Commissioner Buckley?
Yes, so for the other part, it was, it was discussing the reference to the fire code. I came up with that language, again, on the fly a few weeks ago, and as a researcher, I didn't really like that because I tried going and searching for something in the fire code that talked about it, and it's not very clear. So I think a better standard would be to match what's in the city's traffic engineering design standards, which I did look up. And so those say that the typical minimum width of a residential street should be 28 feet. 28 feet is intentionally chosen number because it allows for on-street parking. If you go narrower than that, it becomes difficult to allow parking on both sides and for cars to pass in both directions, or for there to be emergency egress and so forth. So I would just simply suggest, rather than saying, you know, where it is deemed, you know, too narrow pursuant to fire code regulations, that we could just change the language to say if the property is located on a block on which the width of the street is less than 28 feet.
The width of the street is less than 28 feet?
Yes.
Okay. And then would you suggest deleting the remainder of that, so narrow pursuant to fire code regulations?
Yes.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion. And just so we are all on the same page, again, on that section, it would be if this motion were to pass, or if the property is located on a block on which the width of the street is determined to be less than 28 feet. If there's no discussion, I would take a roll call.
Commissioner? Commissioner Gribble-Unis.
Yes.
Commissioner Buckley.
Yes.
Commissioner Kolkmeier.
Yes.
Commissioner Furman.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neal.
Yes.
The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Other thoughts on the draft resolution? Commissioner Gribble-Unis?
Thank you. Is it all right if we, do we want to just take these line by line, or do we want, is it okay to jump ahead?
I think however you want to do it.
Okay. So I wanted to bring up for discussion the, the section regarding the stairway facing the, facing any street. And I guess, similar to my concern that I brought up last time, I just want to bring this up for discussion with the other commission members. My concern with eliminating the requirement to not have the stairway facing a street, and I guess I would focus on the primary street, goes back to the potential for an ADU to change the character of a neighborhood. And the specific condition that concerns me in terms of its capacity to change an existing neighborhood's character is if you have a residence and then directly in the side yard of that residence, a detached garage, and above that detached garage, you have your ADU. And the thing that I think will change the character of the neighborhood or how the street feels is if you have a stairway, an exposed exterior stairway, leading directly up from the front yard of the property to the ADU, introducing an architectural element that would otherwise not be in that neighborhood to begin with. I could probably be convinced otherwise, but that's kind of my concern about this item.
Other commissioners' thoughts?
I wonder, and this is maybe a question for Mr. Rice, but so the concern is the potential for it to affect the character, right, of the neighborhood, right? So there is some design standard oversight when someone applies for the ADU. And this is an opinion question, I realize, but would you consider the stair on the street-facing side of the ADU as an element that would get reviewed under the design standard review part of this?
It could be. I think it would depend on this standard as well, right? So when we were to look at a house, and it's got a second story, if somebody had a balcony that they were accessing with a stairway or something, that would be a little different in how the staff reviews. The, we don't necessarily look at the context of the surrounding neighborhood. Somebody comes in, it's zoned for a particular unit type, and they come in with a house style that doesn't fit with, the homes in the neighborhood don't have a specific style, right? So this could introduce a different type of home in there, and there could be an external stairway. Now, that stairway is, it's going to have railings, and then we're going to look at architectural elements that are used in the house and the railing and so forth. So we start to tie those two pieces together. But I'm not sure that a planner would necessarily make a move the stairway to another location. And it could be external. This was specific, I think, when it was written, was more applicable to ADUs above garages, is what we were looking at.
Commissioner Furman?
Yeah, I am, I'm not trying to double down on the question, but yeah, because my understanding is there is some design standard oversight. But what you're saying is essentially it's within the context of the single building, the design standard meeting, it's, it's meeting the same context of the house that already exists there, or that sort of thing. It's not given consideration to the neighborhood context.
Correct.
So, okay.
We have a lot of older neighborhoods with smaller, single-story homes, and the lots are sold, and the home is removed, and you end up with a much bigger, single-family home next to the existing, single-family home. So it does start to change the character of the neighborhood. But if you were to go through the neighborhood and do an assessment, there's not an international style, or a Victorian, you know, so there's not a specific style. It's just that you, you know, you could call them ranches, but there's not necessarily, it's a neighborhood of ranches, it's a neighborhood of single-story homes.
Understood. Yeah, and the reason I, and the reason I ask this, and I say this as a statement, is that I'm trying to think about what that rule is trying to achieve, right? And it's about maintaining, in the confines of everything else guiding the ADU document, it seems like the intention is to make sure the ADU stays in, in the sort of design standards of the property itself. It doesn't seem like the ADU guidelines are trying to make the neighborhood context a major consideration under that interpretation, right? Like, and if that's the case, as much as I might not want to see the stairs on the face of the building, it's hard for, you know what I mean? I get your concern, too. And I was trying to understand, basically, what I was trying to do is figure out, is there a way I could argue with you on the idea of maintaining that rule to prevent the stairs? And so I was looking for that way. And it seems like if we're not really taking into account the style and context of the neighborhood, it's harder for me to argue on that same side. So, anyway.
Commissioner O'Neal?
So I just had a clarifying question for Commissioner Gribble-Unis. You're talking about the stairway coming into the front yard where it exits and enters, or crossing the facade of the house?
Hey, I guess the condition I'm talking about would be the ADU above a garage on the side of a house with the entry facing the primary street, and then an exterior stair being perpendicular to that front entry towards the front of the house.
Okay.
And I guess a little more as to, as to why I've been thinking about this through my head, going back to, you still want the potential for these ADUs to have that welcoming experience for people, make it feel like home, and as, you know, guests or whatnot are going to their place. So having that entry on the front still, I think, has logic and makes sense. And then I guess, when arguing with myself on this, that stair can always be within the ADU as a, you know, more traditional house might be. And that area would, would be a small portion of our increase of the ADU area to begin with.
Okay, thanks. Would this be something that could be, I mean, I guess it would probably be a minor variance, but if it were prohibited, if it were to remain prohibited, would that be something that could be handled in a, in a variance and just addressed, like, yes, this goes with the architecture of this space, of this building, and we're going to allow it?
It's in the U standards, so we wouldn't vary a standard within the U standards.
Okay. Then I guess I would say, if there's really not, if there's really not an assessment of the fabric of the neighborhood being done by planning, why do we even have this note in, in the, in the zoning? Because it's not really being enforced. And I think it's, it's probably asking a lot of the planning department to then drive each neighborhood to see if they feel that these plans fit the fabric of the neighborhood. And quite honestly, is not an answerable problem because it's subjective. So then I start to just go down the path of arguing aesthetics with a neighborhood is such a waste of everyone's time. And myself having to look at someone's hideous choice on their home doesn't really affect me, other than my eyes have to recover from it. I mean, it's really not, they're creating an obsolescence to their own property and their own property value. And so it's sort of like an attempt to protect people from themselves. It really doesn't affect my property. So I don't know what we're trying to achieve in doing that, other than it's often not attractive and arguably unattractive. I just don't, I don't see, I don't see how we're enforcing it. I don't see how it's being enforced. And there's, if we're talking about opinion, there's plenty of deemed okay structures by planning that I would never build, or want to live in, or like the sight of. And that doesn't matter, because I don't have to live in it. And if I want to paint my house hot pink, nobody can stop me from doing that. So a staircase in the front of my home, I just, I'm, I'm confused by it. I just, seems like a waste of energy to put it in the zoning code to me, based on preference. And I guess I'm just curious in other.
Commissioner Gribble-Unis?
Sure, thank you. And I guess I would just also, as a, another reason I've been thinking through this is I, I'm trying to, in just driving around, find or picture other single-family houses that have a second-story entry with a stair directly from the exterior as an urban condition or a neighborhood condition. And as far as I could have seen, it doesn't really exist. So I guess I just was interpreting this line of the zoning code as, because of the unique condition of putting a residence on top of a garage, I think is specifically why this is in there, because you wouldn't do like a second-story entry on a single-family house unless there was a very unique site condition. It just seems to be trying to avoid that potential within a neighborhood. And yes, it is aesthetic. But again, I think it's aesthetic in the sense that the typical condition, or in a typical condition, this wouldn't be found in a neighborhood.
And I guess I would just weigh in on, my perspective on this is, and I think it, I share your concern, because I do think the reason it's in here is the assumption that it's, that that sort of architectural element is inconsistent with, you know, the fabric of the city. However, we are in a process to determine how to reduce barriers, and I can envision circumstances where it might be appropriate, it might be logical, and to the extent it is unattractive, that is something the property owner would be making, you know, that's at their risk. So on balance, I still would prefer to see this requirement go away, but I hear the concern. Commissioner Buckley?
Thank you. I'm kind of torn about this. I do see a lot of value in Commissioner Gribble-Unis's argument to pay attention to and be careful about aesthetics. I think that more aesthetically pleasing ADUs will be more accepted by the community. And, you know, this is a needed housing type. We need a lot more of, I'd hate for, that it would be pushed back. Sometimes it does seem like when people are pushing back against something, they'll just throw every excuse they can at the wall to push back against it. But things going to neighborhood character, what the neighborhood looks like, what it feels like, how. feels like, how the buildings present themselves to the street and to the public realm, just something wildly out of place with that is exactly the kind of thing where, I don't know, you're making that argument easy. So I, I think I understand why this is in the code. I know that last time Commissioner Gribblyonis alluded that he thought there were design solutions around this. So I'd appreciate you expounding upon what some of those design solutions are in the scenarios that you are specifically concerned about. And I appreciate too, since you are an architect, talk about their costs. We want to reduce barriers. So can we, is, is, are there situations where this is obviously saving a lot of money?
Commissioner Gribblyonis?
Thank you. Sorry. So the, the design solution would be that you have the stair on the interior of the building with your front entry at grade, basically at ground level. To your point about reducing cost, that would be more cost, it'd be cheaper likely to build on the exterior. And then, yes, this would not be eliminating a barrier. So I do agree with that.
Do we have a particular proposal in, by way of a motion to change this section?
Commissioner Gribblyonis?
My proposal to change this section would be to change the stricken-out portion from, however, a new stairway shall not be located on any street-facing facade, to say, however, a new stairway shall not be located on any primary, street-facing facade.
Okay, is there a second? Unless there is a second, I'm afraid the motion fails for lack of a second. Any other thoughts or suggestions that commissioners would like to discuss on that? I have, and did you have other ones representative? Okay. Representative. You've just been promoted. Too many years with the General Assembly. On what is Section A5, and this draft changes it to A4, this is that question about the owner occupying at least one of the two units. And the language in this draft eliminates that requirement to file the covenant. The more I have thought about this, the more I'm concerned about this as a barrier. And I am wondering if, I guess I'm leaning towards suggesting, and I'd be curious what others think, simply removing this requirement. And I understand the concern that that means that potentially both the main house and the ADU could be rented out. But the goal here is to remove barriers and this seems like a barrier that I, I think is, is inconsistent with the effort to try to expand the number of housing opportunities. Commissioner Gribblyonis?
Thank you. I've definitely thought about this and changed my state of mind around it. I find myself more on the elimination of the requirement to have the owner live on the property, thinking of it similar to a duplex or something of that nature. If someone inherits a house, it, it just seems like it streamlines and going back to what you said earlier, removing a barrier to the construction of these ADUs.
I don't see it, but I'm going to go ahead and call on you, Commissioner Furman. I don't know if your button's working. Oh, the speak button.
Yeah, okay. Well, fair enough.
There it is.
No doubt, it is working. Well, it's funny, I, I do want to ask one question on this one, which is, what we're looking at is the rules governing what happens when they're trying to get the permit to build the ADU, right? Because we talked about the idea of the covenant. And so there's nothing really governing it once the owner has built it and moves on. Theoretically, anyone afterwards, it's not as though this is governing the use of the property, this is only governing the permitting of the building of it. Is that the way we would see this?
So I actually view it, when the way I read it is that the covenant runs with the property and so it would have to be, the use, the owner would either have to occupy the ADU or the primary structure.
I guess my question is if the covenant part was eliminated, which is one of those, then, well, no, I'm sorry, I might, I probably wasn't clear. If the covenant part's removed, then all that remains is the impact to the person permitting the build of it?
So I'm going to go back, I apologize, let me look at.
And, and it, it may be that the answer, but I, I might be wrong, but I think the answer is that if the sentence that is not struck is still in there and that person does not, the owner does not comply with that, it could be a zoning violation. It would be inconsistent. So the neighbor calls and says, the owner moved away and is renting both of them, I want code enforcement to come out and issue a zoning violation.
I would assume, I guess I would assume that's the intent, right? I'm just trying to figure out what, what we actually get if we don't get rid of this. Okay, thank you.
I would make a, I'm sorry, Commissioner Buckley?
Thank you. Again, I think that there's a, an idea that ADUs are primarily built by owner occupants of property, just owing to the nature of what they are, that, you know, a landlord who's living next door to you or below you or above you or so forth is more likely to keep the rent low, not raise it as much over time, take care of issues when they arise and make sure that the tenant is someone who's not causing a nuisance to the neighbors because the landlord is the neighbor. I think that kind of stuff is the intent. I do also think, on the other hand, that over time, yes, certainly, this is like a barrier to the production of more housing and as someone who wanted to strike the, the whole bit about the covenant, last time we met to talk about this, just anything like that, that is an additional, you know, barrier placed upon selling the property is something that I would not be in favor of retaining. So maybe we can stick close to what we have, but with some sort of language to modify it just a bit. What would everyone think of the idea of requiring an owner occupant at the time that a permit for construction is issued and maybe even putting a requirement on it of, you know, yeah, proving to staff satisfaction that at that time they are a bona fide resident. But after the property is sold in the future, you know, someone passes away and an out-of-state relative inherits the house, whatever, there's not a restriction on, on who can live there, who can rent it, who can buy it. Is, you know, putting those kinds of restrictions on it at that time might just result in the property being underutilized and become blighted and vacant and so forth. So, yeah, I, I would say that maybe a possible compromise is that we, we require owner occupants only when it's being built and some date will change, but so be it. Neighborhoods change.
Commissioner Furman?
I, I tend to be in favor of something like that as well. I, I guess the reason is, I'm not so worried about both pieces being rented out. And I'll, to be totally clear, the thing that worries me most is the idea of, um, single-family, I mean, I'm all for reducing the barriers, increasing housing, that's absolutely one of my sort of primary intents, but I guess my concern is the quality of what is produced in the ADU form. If the version of it that exists out there can be seen as pure investment, by that I mean the actual initial property and ADU, the whole thing is pure investment for someone. The best return on investment is to simply find a way to invest in the property where you're just going to maximize the size of your ADU, minimize the quality of construction, get it rented out. I mean, I don't know, I, and I guess I shouldn't make assumptions about that, or maybe I shouldn't worry about that. But that is a little bit what I'm worried about, whereas I think the idea is if the owner who builds it is a part of it and is a little more invested in the quality of the property, then I don't care if they take off and rent off both pieces, but it feels like they're a little more invested in the property than the idea of outside investor. Now, that might be overreach in, in what I'm trying to achieve, so I, I could be persuaded the other way, but right now, that's my concern and that's why I do lean a little bit towards, at the very least, the initial person building this property being a little more invested in it. No, pun intended.
Commissioner Buckley, would you like to actually put that into a motion where, Commissioner Buckley?
Sure. I move that under A, number four, as currently amended, we strike the language that says the owner of the property on which an accessory dwelling unit is located shall occupy either the primary or accessory dwelling unit and replace it with the owner of the property on which an accessory dwelling unit is located shall be occupying the, the primary dwelling unit at the time in which the building permit for the accessory dwelling unit is issued.
All right, so the owner, your suggestion is that A4 be changed to the owner of the property on which an accessory dwelling unit is located shall be occupying.
Shall be occupied.
Shall what?
Shall be occupied. Oh, shall, yeah, shall be occupying.
Shall be occupying the primary residence at the time of the permit filing?
I, I said issuance of the building permit.
At the issuance of the building permit?
Mr. Rice has suggested, I'm happy to word that at some other milestone that makes sense.
I think I would use permit issuance.
Okay. The time of the permit issuance?
Yes, I agree.
All right, is there a second?
Commissioner Furman?
Sorry, and I don't want to muddy it, but I'm wondering if we, and this might be worse, so let me just throw it out there. I'm wondering if we can't simplify it a little bit to say something along the lines of, and maybe we actually can't even say this, but I'm going to throw it out there. Feel free to correct me. To something that's more about a permit for an ADU shall only be granted to an owner occupier of the primary residence or something that's, I don't, I don't know if that is permissible, but just trying to kind of reverse what you're saying in a way that might shorten it.
I'm happy with that friendly amendment.
So we're going to, in order to actually consider that, we're going to have to say that again. Why don't you withdraw your, actually, I don't think it was seconded. So you'd like to make the motion as to how this should be phrased?
Okay. So I, I move to strike, sorry, which number is that there? Just a moment.
Yeah, A4.
A4. So I move to strike A4 and replace it with, a permit for an ADU shall only be granted to an owner occupier of the primary residence?
Issued. A permit for an ADU shall only be issued to an owner occupant?
Owner occupant of the primary residence. I'm wondering if there is some permitting issues embedded in that by saying who it's issued to, since a contractor gets a permit issued to them. Sorry, I'm not trying to muddle this at all, but this is, I'd rather have it say the right thing. So, um, sorry, I'm trying to think of how to rephrase it.
That's fine. Let's go to Commissioner O'Neill while we're sorting this out. We do have a motion and a second on this wording, but go ahead.
Can I, can we discuss it?
Oh, absolutely.
Because we've seconded, it's been seconded.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. I guess my question would be, does it need to be, the verbiage of having it be occupied in the primary home, I think is problematic, to my ear anyway, because if you're on a property, there's just a lot of conditions, right? So if there's a tiny house in the back of a property and your intent is to build a primary residence in front of it and make that an ADU one day, then does this prohibit that by stating it in such a way? But maybe it doesn't. It just, when I'm hearing it, I'm thinking, are you tied to that being, the tiny house being the primary because you're living in it? So do we need to say that, I guess would be my question?
And, and my perspective on this is that I, I mean, I, I do appreciate the work towards a compromise, but I think it's better to either pick that it's got to be fish or foul. It's either an accessory dwelling unit that always requires the owner to be in that accessory unit or in the main residence, or we're not going to be policing those things. I would be, I would still be more comfortable just eliminating this, but that is only one So, and there may be thoughts about further wording, but at this moment, we have a motion to say that all of four is deleted and in its stead is, a permit for an ADU shall only be issued to an owner occupant of the primary residence.
Commissioner Furman?
Oh.
Commissioner Buckley?
Yeah, can I propose an amendment to that, that we just strike the word, primary residence and replace it with property? I think getting to Commissioner O'Neill's point, there may be an existing home on the lot and the intent of their project is to make that the accessory unit and build a new primary unit. And so just, if they're living on the property, they're living in the house that's already there. And I think that's the intent of the motion. But then we're not hung up on the detail of, after there's two dwelling units on the property, which one's primary and which one's accessory?
So the suggestion that Commissioner Buckley is, is asking, Commissioner Furman, is strike of the primary residence at the end, so it's a permit for an ADU shall only be issued to an owner occupant?
Okay, so do I, sorry, forgive me, but do I move to?
Well, you can, yeah, you can accept that amendment.
I accept that amendment.
You're seconding that amendment, I assume, so that's now the language we're looking at. Further discussion on that?
Yep, Commissioner O'Neill?
I would be comfortable with striking it altogether as well. However, I do think that the intent of try, because I don't think we can protect these properties from being sheer, sheer investment for people. There's just, that is overreach, right? I mean, we can't know what's in someone's heart. But ultimately, it at least tries to put some stipulation on folks or entities, really, not folks, coming in, swathing neighborhoods in, in a purchase, flipping them, you know, optimizing the building footprint and then turning around and selling them, gouging, you know, creating just a heightened, adding to the heightened housing market, I think. So I think, though I don't think it's, I think it's difficult to enforce, I, I think it's important because at least it tries to put, it tries to put some stipulations, sorry. Yeah, that's all I wanted to say on that.
Commissioner Buckley?
Yeah, I just want to say, I think that this kind of amendment actually makes the enforcement job of staff a lot easier. When someone's going through the permit process, that's probably a time when they have high contact with staff and it's easy for staff to request to them records demonstrating bona fide occupancy of a property as their primary residence. Whereas years down the line, if it's just up to the zoning code and code enforcement officers have to go out there and. and code enforcement officers have to go out there and prove whether or not, you know, the person who owns the property is really living there or not, as our attorney told us in our last meeting when we were discussing similar issues, those are hard code enforcement cases. It can be difficult to prove where someone lives. And so we just don't have to worry about that because that's not regulated anymore. The only thing that's regulated is that you live there at the time when you're having high interaction with staff and the time when it would be easiest for staff to make a determination.
Mr. Rice?
And kind of following up on Commissioner Buckley's comment and Commissioner Furman's comment earlier, I'd like to ask Lauren, at the time, if, so with this, the way I'm reading this, it's related, it's tied to the permit. Commissioner Furman's comment was that a contractor applies for the permit, all right? So then we have to tie something with the contractor to the property owner, and then how do we establish residency? Could, I'd like to at least inform the commissioner a little bit, because I haven't wrapped my head around this in application.
Yeah, so there are going to be some challenges with this, because as Commissioner Furman mentioned, it's actually often not the case that the actual property owner is obtaining the ADU permit. It's usually going to be a contractor or perhaps a subcontractor, but I don't, anyway. And so we probably do need to work on that language to make that clear, that yes, if a contractor's working on behalf of the property owner, that occupies the unit. But the other piece of this is, staff would obviously have to build in, or maybe there would have to be some sort of additional documentation supplied that this is the primary residence. Perhaps something beyond just here's our, you know, here's two pieces of mail that I've received here, but, you know, something else. And so it would, the onus would be on staff before they issue the building permit, whether that would be planning or public works, to obtain this type of information, which I don't know, and I just don't know from a staffing standpoint if that's something that they, that your staff looks at or is able to do. But it would probably have to be, what we'd probably have to do is have some sort of either internal regs or something where staff can say, okay, this is what's sufficient to prove, to demonstrate proof of occupancy and have a list of, you know, driver's license, you know, state government issued identification, you know, whatever, whatever the case may be. So we'd probably have to not put it all in the code because that could get, be a lengthy list, but probably have some sort of administrative regs that accompany this that would say specifically what staff would have to verify.
And I think that makes perfect sense to me, and I think that's why if we want to keep in this notion that the owner occupant has to be involved with an ADU, if that was the will of the commission, I think we're better leaving it the way this draft is, which is we take out the covenant and we leave it as a code violation, which we have a complaint-driven system for everything in the zoning code. This would just be one more, where when the neighbor says, I know they moved to Florida, I want you to issue a zoning violation, they need to get back here, they need to sell it to someone who's going to live there. If that's important, then I'm wondering if that isn't the simplest way to enforce that, though my preference would still be to take it out altogether. Are we ready for a roll call on the motion? Commissioner Furman?
I have to say, I, and I realize this was my motion, trying to simplify the language. I don't know, I, it feels, again, like a barrier. The intent here was some sort of safeguard against pure outside investment in single-family property done in a way that would harm the neighborhood, because I know that obviously people are concerned with that, and there has to be some sort of concern. I mean, there's some level of consideration for a neighborhood in this, even in this effort to expand housing. But it does seem like this version is raising the bar for what the city has to do to achieve this. So I am, I will admit, I'm waffling on my own motion a little bit, but.
Commissioner Buckley?
To the point that Ms. Danick raised, maybe we could amend the language of this motion one more time to say that the, you know, what it says right now, the permit has to be issued to the owner occupant, add some language like issued to the owner occupant or his or her designee. That way it could be a contractor and so forth.
It seems like a friendly amendment. Is that something that Commissioner Furman would accept?
I would accept that, yes.
And Ms. Danick, does that address the concern you were getting at?
Yeah, it would because, it would, in the sense that we would still probably create some regs to say what proof we need, but the contractor can obviously sign the form as a designee. We don't have to do anything too formal for that. And they would have to maybe still have the, potentially have the owner occupant come and supply the proof, but there's, that's something staff can deal with administratively.
So the motion would be to strike all of four and insert a permit for an ADU shall only be issued to an owner occupant or their designee. Roll call.
Commissioner Gribbly-ones? Commissioner Buckley?
Yes.
Commissioner Kolkmeier?
No.
Commissioner Furman?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neill?
No.
Motion passes three, two.
Okay. Other changes or suggestions? Upon reflection, are there any other barriers that we think we would recommend? If not, go ahead, Commissioner Buckley?
Yes, so we're passing a resolution that is going to city council. So before I make a specific suggestion, maybe we'll just have some commission discussion about this. Section two of this resolution has language about the, you know, the clerk will forward this to the city manager and council and indicate in the staff report that, you know, this changes along with some of the tables and the other articles and so forth. I would suggest maybe we could add other stipulations that could be forwarded along as our recommendations in that staff report. So some ideas that I might offer for discussion that have come up in our several meetings before we've discussed ADUs could be something like the city taking up a project to investigate the feasibility of subsidizing sewer tap fees. That's not a planning and zoning issue, but it is an issue of something the city council could put in the annual budget if they wanted to. There could be other, other ideas. I know some cities have programs where they have developed templates of 20 or 30 pre-designed ADUs. And if you are a property owner and you just want to go pick one of those off the shelf and apply it to your property, then there's some sort of, you know, expedited process. Again, I think that gets beyond what's in the zoning code, which is our purview, but sounds like something the city council could investigate doing. You know, cities have had success with this program in, you know, lowering the design costs and therefore it's a barrier that's lowered and spurs some more construction, so.
Thoughts on that, everyone? My reaction is that those are absolutely valuable parts of any program that would facilitate ADUs, but I am concerned that it's outside our lane. I would feel most comfortable if we just make recommendations related to changes in the zoning code, the zoning ordinance that would remove barriers. And I also think that within the city council process, there would be opportunities, even for individual commissioners, to comment publicly on additional programs that might be useful. But just speaking only for myself, I'd feel most comfortable if we stayed within recommendations to change the zoning code. Others' thoughts? Commissioner O'Neill?
Has everyone had an opportunity to read the Lakewood Speaks comments? There was some comment regarding the size of the ADU, the 1,400 square feet. Do we want to have any discussion around that? In the comment, it seemed like the person felt like Ms. Pedrioli felt like it was arbitrary and like it was a bit large. So do we want to have any discussion around that? And do we want to talk about any of the public comment that we've got? Mostly, I mean, positive and in favor of ADUs, but definitely had, there were some questions around some of those things. I don't know if we need to discuss that or if we, does everyone think of that?
Let me first just make sure we draw a close on Commissioner Buckley. Is there, I didn't want to prevent an opportunity, if you wanted to make a particular suggestion as it relates to that section two, or if you think you've gotten some feedback. Commissioner Buckley?
I'll ask a question to staff inspired by Chair Kolkmeier's comment. I understand well that the zoning code is our, is our lane and our purview and what we're doing up here. Is there anything in our rules, policies, procedures, or anything to prohibit us from at least just making a suggestion of other things that fall outside zoning that could be explored, that even though they're not in our land use code, will affect how land is used?
I don't think there's anything in the rules and procedures that prohibits that. So you could make a suggestion. I might suggest that it's a comment that goes to Amy Deeknicker and Shannon Terrell as part of their housing plan process. So that would be more appropriate, the comment's there, that's going to council. But you could, if the commission agrees to add something, it's not coming from staff, because if it was coming from staff, we would be kind of counseling that it's outside of zoning. And it's not an issue that staff would deal with, but as a commission, if you're making a recommendation, it's not necessarily zoning-related, and if you all agree to it, I think it's okay.
Buckley?
Yeah, so going to Ms. Deeknicker and her team working on the housing plan, is that, well, are we just expressing support for something they're already working on? I believe the housing study, which is under their purview, does contain a discussion about ADUs, and it discusses some of these programs that I brought up, you know, such as model blueprints and subsidies from the city for the fees and so forth.
Right, and that's part of the program that they'll eventually present to council. So it's, it's coming from staff, the planning staff in that matter, in a different way. That group, it's, so Development Assistance, which is my team, is administering the zoning code. Amy's group is a kind of a new group that's forming. I don't know if they have a title yet, but it's housing-related. And so that team would work on things that aren't a comprehensive plan or, and/or zoning-related, specific to housing programs and so forth. And there's still a lot of questions there as to how that's going to work.
Okay. Perhaps then I'll make a motion that we add language to section two of our resolution stating the appropriate place in the resolution that furthermore, the Planning the findings of the draft housing study. Planning staff is currently developing, period. And so that would encompass all the things that are in that housing study, then, you know, that are inclusive of what I just said, and it might even include other ideas, too. I think just about, yeah, the expediting, permitting, and so forth. It's been a few months now since I read that study, but I think there was something mentioned about expedited permitting, subsidizing tap fees, or working with the districts to reduce tap fees, and having model blueprints. Those are all the ideas I can remember that are in that housing study. So certainly I'm, yeah, willing to lend my voice of support to that. And, well, if the commission agrees to my motion, I guess we all, then that speaks for us.
And just so we're clear, the motion is to add to section two, furthermore, the Planning Commission supports the findings of the draft housing study as it relates to ADU development?
Yes.
Is there a second? It's not an indication of lack of agreement. It's, I think, for want of a second, it would be that it may just not be the best place for that. But those are important. I personally believe you're absolutely right. Those are crucial in terms of getting more ADUs. But without a second, it does not look like we are in a position to add that language. Any other thoughts on that? Commissioner O'Neill, you had raised the question of the square footage, and this is something that we talked about, and I think we had a lot of back and forth. Is it a percentage of the building? Is it a fixed number? Is it, you know, maybe uncapped? Certainly, there seemed to be consensus that it shouldn't be limited to one bedroom. But what is everyone's thoughts on the language that is in this draft that basically doubles it from 700 to 1,400, but it still has a hard cap on the square footage? Commissioner Buckley?
At our meeting two weeks ago, I believe I moved for some language at one point to keep the unit size smaller than the primary unit or 1,400 feet, whichever was, you know, whichever one was smaller. And the will of the commission expressed at that time by our votes was to just cap it at 1,400 feet. And in reflection since two weeks ago, I've come to peace with that, and I wouldn't change it now.
Thank you. Any other thoughts on that provision? Commissioner O'Neill?
I would just agree with, with the 1,400 square feet and with what Commissioner Buckley had just said, because we did have a lot of conversation about the best way to calculate or quantify the size of these dwellings. And I think ultimately, 1,400 square feet, though you don't have to maximize that if you wish not to, does allow for a nice-sized two-bedroom, three-bedroom even unit that a family could rent. So I think that it, I just think that that square footage makes sense for livability.
And I would also note, in talking to a number of people, it's not a huge data set, but a number of people who talked about being an older person in a home, and really what they wanted was the ability to build their perfect little suite, at maybe larger than the primary residence. In this language, it could not be 1,400. I think it does add a little more flexibility in the event that someone from the primary residence decides, I'm going to build my perfect little ADU, and I want it to be big enough, you know, for, for me, and then rent out the house. So it might even be larger than the original house. So I think this is a good compromise that I continue to support.
Thank you, Chair Kolkmeier. I guess I just want to touch on the 1,400 number, just in terms of livability. I agree with Commissioner O'Neill. I think you said it very well, but the 1,400 square foot is not just an arbitrary random number. It is a number intended to provide flexibility to property owners or whomever is building the ADU to create a three-bedroom home that's still livable and functional. At the same time, it's at the upper end of a small house, and it's well below the average new construction square footage. So going back to the, trying to make sure that these are naturally affordable properties, also big enough to make those initial investments worthwhile.
If there are no other thoughts, my suggestion is that we take the changes that have been approved today. We will prepare a new draft that will be posted on Lakewood Speaks in advance of our next meeting for final public comments, and then at our next meeting, be prepared to take action on it. But even at that meeting, there's an opportunity to make additional changes if commissioners would like to do so. Any other thoughts or questions on that issue? Well, thank you. And, and thank you a great deal, because, you know, it may seem like a long period of time. We've got a lot of hours talking about this. I really think you've taken the concept from a concept to a specific proposal that we can put out for the public and for the city council, and I think that's great work. I think next is item number four.
Item four, other legislative matters, recommendations on affordable home ownership. Item four, other legislative matters, recommendations on affordable home ownership.
Thank you. So as everyone knows, back in February of this year, we had a council request, and I'll read it for us and the public. There was a request that the Planning Commission explore the addition of a smaller lot, single-family and/or duplex zoning category that would create additional avenues for more affordable home ownership in Lakewood. Ideas for discussion could be smaller lot-size allowances if homes are sold for a certain AMI threshold, duplex by right if homes are sold for a certain AMI threshold, et cetera. Since the Planning Commission has the context and expertise for this discussion, the above ideas are just prompts for potential discussion. I realize that these may not be the viable solutions, but would appreciate the opportunity to explore them further. And after that submission came in, there had been a study session on this as well, and there'd been quite a bit of discussion. It's kind of focused around the notion of the R1-0 concept to create the smaller lot sizes. So I'm going to suggest that there are a number of ways we could go about this discussion, and you may have other ones. But the ones that occur to me are, first, make no recommendation at all. We don't think that this is something the city council should consider. That's an option. Secondly, we could try to craft a description of an R1-0 district, and I think it was Commissioner Buckley who had suggested previously that, that a good way to do that would be to look at like R1-6, the zoning summary, zoning district summary sheet, which has all the basic components, and kind of map that out as to what that particular zoning district would be. In addition, we could create, discuss, and suggest some criteria for where it might be appropriate. A third option is that we could take a similar path to what the commission recently did on the CRL zoning district, which is you create the district, and rather than mapping it, you kind of create the opportunity for an applicant to say, this is a great place to have R1-0, and I'd like to apply for it. So that could be an approach. One I would like to put out there is a little more radical, but I think it's, it does focus our mind on what we're trying to do here, which is, we have a lot of R1 districts. And we have a rich architectural, agricultural history in Lakewood. But that is no longer the case. We are dramatically urbanized. And I am wondering if it makes sense to have an R1-43, an R1-18, an R1-12, an R1-9, and an R1-6, and then talking about an R1-0. Perhaps the simplest and most elegant way to approach this might be to simply drop down each of those districts, so that an R1-43 becomes the R1-18, R1-18 becomes R1-12, R1-12 becomes R1-9, R1-9 becomes R1-6, and R1-6 becomes R1-0. That would maintain the exact same proportionality of all of these districts. That's a big concept. It's a radical departure. It might be something that's more appropriate to deal with in the comprehensive plan process. But I throw that out as an approach that would get us to a significant number of R1-0 districts that would be in proportion to all the other residential districts, and it wouldn't require remapping. Discuss among yourselves. Thoughts on what approach? And again, there may be other ways to look at this issue, but I'm curious what you all think, just in terms of how you want to have this discussion, and how we want to frame the issue responding to the council request. Commissioner Furman?
Well, I, I appreciate the radical approach. I feel like we, at the very least, have to start, at least this conversation, talking about what R1-0 is, right? Because even if you take the radical approach, we still have to have it defined. And so, not saying I personally am against it, though I think I would want to be looking at the zoning map a little bit, just because mentally we'd want to understand what we are putting in front of people. But I think, for me, the first place to start would be defining that R1-0. Because I, unless I'm mistaken, when we talked about this before, we had a number of ways we were proposing of accomplishing this. One, just taking it to zero. Others, we're taking it to sort of dimensional requirements, I think, or, I can't remember all the ways. But in the study session, we came up with a number of ways approaching R1-0.
Commissioner Buckley?
I think there's a lot to be explored with the very radical idea, and like Commissioner Furman, I really appreciate it, and do think that that's something that could be what we consider. There's probably value in considering that as part of the comprehensive plan process, where the comprehensive plan is just necessarily looking at a lot more citywide issues that would necessarily be involved in essentially changing the zoning subtly of every single R1-something zone in the city. And I further agree with Commissioner Furman that if we were to take that approach, that we need to start with defining what R1-0 means, or R1-sum number between zero and six means. And so I think that's the logical first step for us to take, and maybe what I'm most prepared to talk about tonight. But I think you have an idea that I don't want to let die. Like, it deserves a community conversation. It deserves analysis. We want to look at a lot of data around that, just a lot of the impacts around that. There's a lot to understand about such a big and bold proposal. And so I'll, I'd be interested in hearing staff's thoughts on what the comprehensive plan may already be looking at with respect to our single-family zones, where that's going, and if this is something that could be, you know, if we were to direct it, fold it into that process that's still unfolding here over the next year and a half or so.
So we have, and I think you maybe already have copies, but send this down to Commissioner Gribbleionis. So one idea was to look at the R1-6, and working off of the Zone District Summary as maybe a way to focus ideas about what an R1-0 might look like. So commissioners have copies of that, obviously. That's also available on Lakewood.org as part of the planning department's handout, so everyone from the public can see the exact same document. But I guess I would ask if, if this is an approach we want to take, what are your thoughts? Commissioner Gribbleionis?
Thank you, Chair Kolkmeier. I guess first is establishing that the next step is that we are going to review this and make edits to it from a process standpoint.
It's a suggestion, but it is not the only approach. If there's other ideas about a way to go, I thought that was a good suggestion from Commissioner Buckley, because it was kind of, you know, the, these are the basic components of a district. So if we had a consensus about what an R1-0 might look like in this format, it seems to me that would be a good place to start, but...
And I, I agree.
Okay.
And I would love to start the conversation off with a suggestion.
Absolutely.
For the conversation, I would suggest that we make the minimum lot size for R1-0, zero. The idea being that you still have to meet all setbacks. You still have to comply with, well, I guess the site coverage will be an interesting thing. I don't think I've thought fully through that portion of, because if you're breaking these down into smaller parcels, we'll have to look at what maximum lot coverage means in those smaller parcels. But building setbacks will still be in place, so you won't have a 10-square-foot site realistically.
Yeah, so there's a, you know, it is difficult to kind of mark up a document like this, but just conceptually, it would be a Zone District Summary of R1-0, the small lot residential. R1-0 district is intended to provide for no minimum lot size for single-family residential development. So that's kind of the, the summary statement, and I'm certainly comfortable with that. Then, of course, in terms of the, if that were to be approved, the new lot size would be zero square feet. The new lot width is a question.
Yeah.
And I'm curious what thoughts there may be on that, because certainly, if it's too narrow, it may make it impossible to build. Commissioner Furman?
I'm thinking at the same moment I'm hitting the button. Was, yeah, because assume we kept our setbacks the same, assume we kept everything the same, except for the minimum lot size, right? The reality is setbacks alone are 550 square feet, right? And I, I guess what I'm saying is there's, maybe we're not worried about it saying zero, even though we will know in our minds that it's going to be at least 1,000 square feet, right? It's going to be some size. And so the zero is somewhat meaningless. And so in some ways, we can sort of set all that aside and determine what is, I mean, I guess what I'm getting at is, there has to be something in there that determines how the buildings are going to exist on these lots, and what we would be building to, I think, is the thing that needs to be thought about. Because when we were talking about the R1-0, it's a shame that this has taken so long to get to this point, because I can't remember all the conversations we had, but we talked about the cottage home complex situation, which in a lot of ways, the only reason the R1-0 makes sense there is because the way in which you're dividing up the lot such that people have their individual ownership, right? And so I guess the size doesn't matter as much as how we envision it being used, only because of, it's, it's never going to be really zero. And so maybe the place to start is talking about how it will be used. Is it, do we imagine little tiny homes? And at which point, I think we look at the size of homes that can, there's a certain size, I forget what the limit is, where you can't qualify for FHA loans, for example. And I think it's, I think it's 400 square feet. Anyway, there's, so those, some of those parts, I don't know. I think some thought about what we envision here, what could be here, will be the way to define this. That's all I'm getting at.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Yeah, thank you. I think I have, I have concern about maintaining the setbacks as they are now. I think that starts to potentially, first of all, I don't know how we handle, and I know that maybe it hasn't been sussed out yet, the minimum lot width, or, you know, the frontage to these properties. And then additionally, if you've got a 25-foot setback in the front, and, you know, you're talking about a 6,000-square-foot lot on this particular example, but we're talking about zero minimum lot size. So then we start creating this little postage stamp of a building envelope. So then I, I guess I'm, I'm having a hard time envisioning what that looks like, even though I really, really like the idea and want to keep investigating the idea. I'm wondering how much we can really push the limits on setbacks? Like, I know for a fact there are smaller even than five-foot setbacks in some of the neighborhoods in Denver. So I'm just curious if there's room to, to play with that a little bit, or if that's kind of, and that's kind of a staff question, I think. If, Mr. Rice, if you have any answers there?
And I am listening and trying to be very quiet, because I have lots of thoughts as well. I think as you start to look at this, building code will come into play. And something that's in the zoning ordinance that you may, may not be aware of, driveway depth, right? So your driveway has to be 18 feet, so that you can pull a car off and it doesn't hang over the back of the sidewalk. So you could reduce the front setback to something behind the sidewalk. I don't know what that number is. Some of our multifamily projects are like zero to 20. The zero is so that you can, you're bringing them up to the street edge. The 20 is allowing you enough space if you have a plaza or some kind of outdoor area. So there's some variation there. So it, I think it depends on what you decide to look at. Building code allows three feet between wall-to-wall on a building. Eaves, so there are your, your setbacks between, it's, it's not a setback from the property line. The setback between the building, I think it's a, a minimum of three feet, or it'd be six feet total if you go wall-to-wall, right? And then you can't have openings, so there's no windows, so you have a very skinny space. And Commissioner Furman, Gribbleionis, if I'm wrong on that, please correct me, but I believe it's three feet. So building code could come into play. Some of the other regulations in the zoning ordinance, it may force cars to the back. Garage widths are going to dictate the width of the unit itself. I think the building code will do that as well, because you, a hallway has to have a certain dimension, the walls have certain dimensions. So the, and I think as Commissioner Furman was talking about this, you can use more of the lot, have smaller setbacks, and then these other things are going to come into play. And then is it one unit on a lot? Is it multiple units on a lot? So, you know, I don't think we have anything designed at this point in time.
Can I?
Yes.
Wouldn't the lot size have to come into play, though, in that scenario? Because you can't have a 6,000-square-foot lot and do a lot of the things that were, that you just mentioned.
Or you have a very, very big house.
Right.
Right. So yes, that, that's where the lot size then comes in. In a traditional neighborhood, right, you've got your footprint, your height, your setbacks, then start to define the scale and size of the structure. Whereas with a smaller lot, those structures, I think, are more defined by the building code, so they, they could be large. The, I think the intent is to put more of them on a lot, so you're going to end up with something that's a little different.
And is there an opportunity, then, to, you know, there's a 50% minimum for open space on the R1-6, so I would imagine that would shrink for something with zero minimum lot size?
It, it, it could, if you were to keep it, again, depending on the product type. So instead of each individual unit having a parking space, if you put parking in one area, you could probably still meet that 50% threshold with the front and the back. So it, yes, you may want to reduce the open space requirement, but it's something that would have to design to.
So essentially, what you're saying is that the units could pool, sorry, pool the, the, the open space among each, however many units fit on that property?
If, if they weren't individual lots, yes.
Hmm. Thank you.
Commissioner Gribbleionis?
Thank you, Chair Kolkmeier. I'm going back to the lots, lot size, how many units are on the site. And I guess where I'm, where I'm going is, take, for example, someone requests to change their R zoning district to this R0. The idea of the R0 is to promote affordable home ownership with the idea that smaller homes are just naturally more affordable. In the case of a rezoning, I've kind of viewed this as if you rezone this and you're going to build multiple... going to build multiple small houses on it, you're going to be going through a replating of that site, um, which is going to be something that is going to vary widely, uh, just on the nature of what this R1-0 zoning district is. So, um, yeah, I guess that's, that's one thought. The other thought is, or am I kind of alone on that, uh, idea of how people will be replating these sites for sale of individual small houses? And that are other people thinking of this as more of a broken-up, uh, row home project on one site?
And I think that's a, that's a great question. I guess my assumption was that, um, if you wanted to have less than the 6,000, you would have to do a subdivision in order to have individual lots that are, say, 3,000 each. Is that the case?
Right, so the, so you come in with a property, whatever the size of it is, if you want individual lots for sale, you would go through a subdivision process. Anything over, uh, quote me on this, I haven't, we haven't done one in a while, it's either 10 or more, or over 10 comes to the planning commission for review. So that plat would...
Housing units? Or is it lots?
Residential, residential lots.
Right.
Yeah. Would come to the planning commission for review.
All right. Currently, you could not get approved for a subdivision that has lots of 3,000 square feet. Okay. Commissioner Furman.
Um, correct me if I'm wrong on this one, Mr. Rice. But if we're talking about the R1-0, it's only, I mean, the only purpose of it would be really allowing for subdividing these lots, right? Because the factor remains, like, if we were, if the cottage-type building, if it's on a larger lot, it is going to violate the zoning of any other zone unless it were zoned, because if it's going to be multiple units on a single lot. See, the R1 zone is, is totally designed for this, this process, right? I mean, the intent here is, is essentially for subdividing into little lots for cottage development, or little homes, or whatever we want to call them, so...
Yes, I, I think that's the, that was the intent when staff was looking at this. It's, uh, it's individual lots for individual homes. Part of that discussion was the cottage-type product that's, that's been brought up before. So it depends on what the commission looks like. If you want to ignore that and talk about individual lots, then you're just looking at, uh, there's no lot size, you've got setbacks and open space to, to address, and then everything comes in as a plat, a replat.
So based on that, and I'll finish up quickly, I think relooking at some of these setbacks does make sense. Um, yeah, I think the, the relationship in the building code, it's been a while since I've dealt with residential, but the, I think the issue is going to be, yeah, the walls' relationship to the lot line, right? And so I think you're, you're right there. But I think that's where the setback, and this maybe preserves people who may not want this, but it preserves some of their concern, would be perhaps the setbacks of an R1-0 adjacent to an R1-0 are changed, whereas where's the R1-0 zone, where that's, that lot may touch, uh, R1-6, there you may have a larger setback. I mean, so you are forcing, uh, whether it's your tiny homes, um, and I forget, there's a difference between tiny home and tiny home, or tiny house and tiny homes, but setting that aside, whether it's tiny homes or cottage development or whatever, you're sort of pulling it into itself by allowing the setbacks where they're adjacent to different zones to be maintained, say, near this. But within the R1 zone, you shrink it down to the 3 feet. I think that may be something that will do two things. Get rid of some concerns people have perhaps about this, but secondarily, it begins to create a look for them already, because it sort of encourages them to coalesce.
Yeah.
I don't know.
So along those lines, um, what about some sort of proportional reductions in width, front-side setbacks, lot coverage, things like that, that would be in keeping with a smaller lot size and a smaller residence? Um, you know, all of these numerical limitations are arbitrary, but they're also typically proportional. They relate to the density, they relate to the types of uses. So I don't know if that's a direction that you may want to go, um, but I could see how each of these standards could be reduced in some reasonable proportion to describe the kind of residence that would be appropriate for this district. Commissioner Gribbly Unis.
Thank you, Chair Kolkmeier. Um, I, I don't want to derail from that. I think, um, this is additive to, um, your suggestion. Um, I just wanted to clarify some of the setback conversation in terms of minimum allowable per code, and, uh, this is just a very quick look at it, but, um, I believe you can, the 3-foot separation is, um, is in, in the IRC, the International Residential Code, um, and you're allowed 25% of the wall area to have openings in it, and that's with a 0-rated exterior, or 0-hour rated exterior wall. And then it does appear that you could have a 0-foot setback, um, but then your exterior wall is required to be 1-hour rated. That is all.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I'll, I'll make some specific suggestions. Do we still have a motion on the floor to, um, change the lot size to 0 feet, 2 feet?
Yeah, actually, I don't think we took a motion.
Okay.
At this point, we really, we were discussing kind of, does this make sense as a way to grapple with how we describe an R1-0? But anyone is free to make a motion if you want. But I am wondering if it might be useful for us to kind of work through this thought experiment, and then maybe make a more general motion, but...
Okay, yeah, let's, let's save motions for some, after some discussion, because I think these criteria all relate to each other, right? If, if we just changed the lot size to 0 square feet and do nothing else, that might not, that may not make as much sense as if we do change other things. The way we change other things relates to also other things that could be changing or staying the same. So, um, yeah, I'll just throw out my ideas. Um, I, I think 0 square feet is, is okay. I've said this before, we discussed it. There are obviously practical minimums, you know, just based on setbacks and, um, open space requirements. Um, you know, I guess in our code, we don't use the term lot coverage, which I think is what I've typically seen in a lot of jurisdictions with open space. It kind of means that the same thing, or it's the inverse of it, but it regulates the same function. It, you know, um, how much of your lot can be a building and how much of it is, is open is something else. So just some observations, uh, along these lines. In the R1-6 zone, we have 50% open space. In R1-9, we have a requirement of 60% minimum open space. Same in R1-12 and R1-18. And in R1-43, it jumps up to 65%. Um, so there is kind of a, a scale, you know, the open space increases with the, with the lot size. If we go down to, uh, something like RMF, or R mixed-use zones, where you're building a solely residential project, that's 30%. If we go up in another increment of density to your mixed-use zones, where there are actual multiple uses on the lot, it goes down to 20%. So, uh, a number that I haven't said yet, that feels like in the sweet spot of, um, that the intensity of the land use that we haven't said yet is maybe 40%, I would suggest, would be appropriate for R1-0, just it's, it's less than R1-6, it's more than, um, RMF. So, uh, so that would be my suggesting. For the new lot width, uh, you know, 60 feet is what's currently required for R1-6. Similarly, that increases as you go up the ladder. R1-9 is a 75-foot, uh, lot width. R1-12 is 100 foot. Curiously, R1-18, which is bigger than R1-12, goes back down to 75, but that's what's in our code. And R1-43 then jumps back up again to 150, so generally decreasing, though, so, um, I would just throw out that 30 feet feels like, uh, a number, um, it's kind of nice. You, you could divide two R1-6 lots, like, divide one R1-6 lot in half if, if that was the number, it's clean. Although, that's a discussion for the commission, is, is that what we intend? Is, is that going to be the typical use of this, that, uh, you know, something that would, used to be R1-6 is, uh, torn down into houses and that's dead? Um, you know, maybe one day, I, I would intuit that that's not economically viable, even if we allowed it today. But like on an empty lot, that, you know, maybe is already in that zone district, uh, it could happen. But I'll throw out 30 feet for, for the discussion. And, um, yeah, I like what Commissioner Gribbly Unis was saying about relying on the building code, you know, setbacks for the side, so if it's, uh, if it's adjacent to another R1-0 lot, reducing the side setback from 5 feet in R1-6 to 3 feet in R1-0, um, feels about right. Likewise, we have, you know, minimum setbacks in the front of, um, 25 to 20 feet. Maybe we just reduce it all to 20 feet on all sides, and that's just, uh, keeping in mind the criteria Mr. Rice was talking about of, you know, driveways. And so, um, I, I think because the driveway criteria that already exists, um, Mr. Rice, does that only relate to multifamily properties, or does that driveway criteria cover any kind of driveway?
So the, the driveway is specific to a single-family home that takes access from the street. If you, uh, push the building up to the setback, you don't have, and you have alley access, then, uh, that driveway standard doesn't apply to the, to the garage that comes off the alley. It's the driveway that crosses the sidewalk on a, on a single-family home.
Okay. Yeah, so like, in newer development, if they wanted to build alleys to facilitate this kind of smaller lot development, that makes sense, and alley is a convenient way to find a place to put your cars without a garage, uh, taking up a large part of the frontage. It, it does allow narrower lots, so, um, yeah, that's, it seems like a good solution.
Just for clarification, you were suggesting 20-foot front minimum setback?
Yeah.
And also 20 on the non-primary front, or drop that one? This is a corner lot, right?
Yeah, yeah.
You've got a primary and a non-primary?
Yeah, I, I'm just throwing out ideas, I, right now, um... Yeah, would it depend on where we want the driveway, uh, to be, right? So, I, I guess if you are building a driveway, then the driveway dimensional standard that Mr. Rice just mentioned is, is governing, and if you're not building a driveway, then, uh, sure, we could reduce that a little bit more, so, um, yeah, I mean, a non-primary front, dropping that down to 10 feet, 15 feet, um, I'm open to, I'm open to suggestions. I'm just trying to think out loud a little bit of, uh, relatively appropriate dimensions. Um, I, I'll stop there, because I've said quite a lot about, you know, setbacks, setbacks on the sides, on the front, um, open space, and, and lot widths and so forth, so, um, I think all these dimensional requirements really need to be considered as a whole, to see if they make sense as a whole. And so I've thrown out a bunch of suggestions, and I'll just listen to other people's reactions now.
Okay. Commissioner O'Neill.
Um, I guess I have a question, maybe for staff again. Is a dra, is a, is a, do we have to provide parking because it's a primary residence? And do we have to provide, uh, in this zoning, it, does there have to be a, um, a garage
I'm actually pulling up the zoning ordinance. I don't want to give you misinformation. So for single-family dwelling units, there is no minimum parking space required. So the parking counts will start with the, uh, the accessory dwelling unit, and the, and the parking code requires a, a space currently. Single-family duplex and attached dwelling units, i.e. townhomes, uh, don't require a minimum parking space, and then they do have caps. So the, you, to answer your question, um, the residential R1, R2 districts do not require a minimum number of parking spaces.
So then that, that means, I think, we could eliminate that 20-foot minimum in the front of the home for a dra, for the, the depth of a car?
Right. So the, you, you could come up with a setback that's, I'm just going to throw out a number of 5 feet, and if they wanted to put driveways, that setback, or however they design it, because you could put a driveway on the side of the home and, you know, park in the back, and so, and pull the house up. So if there, if you're thinking of a typical, um, residential development where you're pulling in off the street and the garage is attached to the house and it's by the side, either the garage has to be setback further than the house, but you need 18 feet from the garage door to the, uh...
Curb or...
Sidewalk.
Sidewalk, okay. Oh, to the sidewalk.
Far edge of the sidewalk, right.
Okay.
So the, the front setback, uh, you can reduce, um, the driveway standard is going to dictate design.
If you provide a driveway?
If you provide a driveway.
Okay. So then I think that allows us, if we don't have to include that, that allows us to tighten up the setback even more, and I think, um, potentially provide, I don't know if I'm calling this Stephen, Commissioner Buckley, I don't know if this is the correct parking term, but parallel parking in the front, you know, there's, I know there's nose-in and diagonal parking. Could that potentially, if we're, because I would tighten up, I would tighten up the side minimums to 3 feet, because that's the minimum. I would make the rear 10 feet. I would put, I would make 20 feet, um, the minimum lot width, so that you could take a 6,000-square-foot, um, property and get 3 homes out of that, instead of, because otherwise it's a duplex, um, if we're removing minimum requirements for lot size. I, I think that maximizing the amount of properties with sensitivity to the zoning that it's abutting, um, keeping those setbacks and honoring those, I think, is really important. But I think in 25% open space for, um, for these homes, I, I don't know. I know that's aggressive, but I'm just looking for ways to make it a nice habitable place that someone would actually want to live in, and it doesn't feel like, you know, a lot of stuff gets compared to Soviet housing, and all kinds of comments get made about things that get built that's affordable. And this would be a way to maybe provide some ability to optimize the, the building envelope, and, and also get more housing out of smaller lots. Just some thoughts.
Well, and I think this is incredibly useful to get these thoughts. I would, I didn't get them all down, though. You, you were, uh, saying maybe, uh, a minimum width of 20 feet?
20 feet.
Maybe 25% locked, uh, open space?
Yep.
And then 3 feet side?
Yep.
And, and what were, did you have a front or a...
Well, the front, I mean, I would shrink that to 5 feet, if, if that's, if we could, because if we don't have to provide, I, I don't know what's really, I haven't given that a ton of thought, because I, I also think a non-primary, um, structure is probably unlikely on something this small. So I don't know that we need to, and maybe staff would disagree with that, and certainly it would have to be vetted, but it seems like a non-primary structure would be unlikely if we're trying to optimize living space.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
And I think the non-primary is probably the garage in most of these, yeah. So, yeah, I mean, I, I would do 10 feet in the rear, in the backyard. I would, I don't know, I would just shrink it all down.
Great. Commissioner Gribbly Unis.
Thank you, Chair Kolkmeier. When working through all of these different permutations, um, I'm totally with you, Commissioner O'Neill, about taking a 60-foot lot, dividing it in 20 equal parts, and now you have 3, um, you know, skinny lots, um, but livable. Um, and I, uh, Paul, do you know if, Mr. Rice, if, is 60-foot the typical R1-6 lot currently? Is that, how, most of them are?
Yeah, most of the...
Across the city?
R1-6 are 60 feet.
Okay. Um, so now, we're going to replat these 60-foot-wide lots by 160, let's say, um, there's going to be... There's going to be many permutations of how these can be rearranged. You could slice it horizontally all the way, which is kind of leading to my question is, do we have the technology to draw a potential layout? Is there like some type of way for us to sketch a potential, these potential ideas to show how they might actually lay out?
Possibly.
And if not, like right now, I mean, maybe for a future study session or what have you?
Right, right. I do, one thing I don't think I've shared, I do have a new intern, I need to check. Most of my interns, they're all UCD students and they are pretty handy. Let me see what he can do with SketchUp, so if I can do that.
If I could just add one more clarifying thing for one of us to like hand-sketch something to help communicate ideas to the rest of the commission.
I, I don't want to sway you one way or the other. I have an example, staff doesn't really care for this, of, there's, it's in north, so northeast Lakewood is kind of a continuation of the, you know, Denver grid. I think it's the old Lakewood subdivision where there are 25 by 100-foot lots. We had four homes built on 25-foot lots with driveways and I can pull up either tonight or at some point in time what those, how they turned out. They're actually, I don't want to sway you one way or the other, it's the driveways. Each one of them has a driveway to the unit and there were some creative designs from the architect to get around of, you can't have 50% of your frontage on a home, be more than door, right? Your door, your house has to be at least 50% of the width of the, of the structure. Your garage can't dominate the street front. So they use tuck-under balconies, but there's a lot of concrete coming into these units and I can pull one up. I can't think of the address right now, I can look it up for you.
I'll send it to you. I have the picture.
Oh, there we go. I can email it to you or I can pull it up later in the meeting if you want to take a look at. But I have a real-world example of something close. It's a 25-foot wide lot. It's 100, 150 feet deep and
I'd love to see that.
1,400, 1,600 square foot home on it.
And I think, Mr. Rice, are these the ones that are right around 17, 20 Ingles?
Yes.
Yeah, I just sent you the, there's a, I just sent you a photo, this is just from Google Maps, but if you want to pull it up.
Do you want me to share my screen?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay, so let me, let me do this. You can continue discussion, so.
Commissioner, I don't know if you had other questions or did that answer your?
Well, it
Maybe.
It's a proposed solution. For example, I'm thinking through what's, what are the implications of having a rear minimum setback when adjacent to R0 of 5 feet to match the side setback of what would have been the R6 zone district if you're replating these lots to be, we'll call it horizontal, moving up the site. And for discussion purposes, it just seems a graphic or a way to graphically explain and explore ideas might help us better understand the feasibility of some of these numbers we're putting out there.
17, 20 Ingles, so this is Ingles and 17th and northeast Lakewood and this is what the developer came up design-wise. Those, in my personal opinion, they don't look too bad if there wasn't that much concrete in the front yard.
So these are in what zone district? This is, is it a planned development or?
Yeah, there's a hodgepodge, let me, let me look up on the zoning map real quick. There's a hodgepodge up there. I think they're single-family and that's why we ended up with this product. I think they're like R1-6, but let me, let me pull that up real quick for you.
You had your light on, didn't you?
Yeah. Okay. Things are kind of slow this evening, so if you want to keep discussion, I'll
Commissioner Furman.
So I appreciate Commissioner Grabley's suggestion of being able to sketch because I, what I was looking at was what, what is the sort of worst-case scenario minimum that you could achieve? And so I was imagining the 60-foot by 100-foot, the 6,000, like purely 6,000 square foot site and imagining one site going to this R1-0. So the site's right adjacent to it, you're on one street, they want to maintain their front setback, right, because they don't want things pushing forward. So you end up with this somewhat of a postage stamp area that is essentially 60 by 50, which also shows me that they meet, just by the buildable area, they naturally meet their open space as a single lot. That goes kind of out the window as you subdivide it, which tells me that I think we will have to be somewhat aggressive in the minimum open space because depending on how you do this, especially if we try and respect some of the adjacent lots, some R1-0 lots will have lots of open space and others will have very little. But I was imagining, what could you do with the 60 by 100? And I think, you know, especially if you go down to that minimum, and I'm not saying someone would necessarily do this, and so I looked it up, the FHA rule isn't about built homes, but it's about manufactured homes, the minimum size. You can get a loan for something even smaller than 400 square feet, but if it's a manufactured home, it has to be 400 square feet. So I'm just using that as a number. But the fact of the matter is, you could have, using your zero lot line, so basically you'd have to do some sort of party wall agreements, but stack them up as two sets of triplexes essentially facing each other with a 10-foot space in between, because I think the idea of you're going to do a cottage development of any form or pairs of row homes, you want them to have some sort of relationship to each other so you're creating more community and not less. You would end up with essentially 20 by 20 buildable spaces with 10-foot space in between, but still able to respect all the setbacks. I'm not saying it should do that, but I'm saying you could, in theory, then on the smallest of the R1-6 lots, get six 400-square-foot properties with a 10-foot by 60-foot courtyard space between them and they would still respect all, so I think there's a lot of opportunities. So I think as we, my whole point in all this is that sketching it, as we talk about this, will be valuable, but secondarily, we have to sort of be pretty, figure out ways for it to be pretty flexible, because I think there's some pretty aggressive ways you could get a lot of small properties on even the smallest of these lots. I was sort of, I'm sure somebody better at Tetris could probably get even more than six, but if we're sticking within something in the neighborhood of the absolute smallest house, you could imagine, again, it could probably get smaller, but I think it's doable to, but then you're going to have to get more aggressive on the open space and probably pretty aggressive on the minimum setbacks, but we could still force setbacks to respect those of the adjacent properties thereby minimizing the impact to a neighborhood or a neighbor as you, if you took the approach you were talking about where we would just upzone everything. Anyway.
Just for clarification, that was simply a, an approach that one could take.
No, I'm saying, but I guess I was trying to build off the idea of like, what is the most you could do, taking that approach, still respecting neighbors, like trying to achieve something for everyone.
Commissioner Buckley.
Thank you. I'm looking at the examples still on our screens of 17, 23 Ingles and thereabout. It looks like the, how does the property line work in relation to the driveway? I guess it goes right down the middle of the curb cut at the street and so is there like a shared agreement between units to share that part of the driveway going onto the street? Some sort of formal easement that was plotted with this?
Right, so the, if you, on the sidewalk side facing the house, essentially that's the right-of-way, right? So as you come to the street, it's in public right-of-way, there doesn't need to be a reciprocal agreement because it's in the public right-of-way. Who's responsible for maintenance? So when it gets on the other side of the sidewalk, you can see that seam in the concrete, which is essentially would be the property line, and then they both have their own driveway to maintain up to the sidewalk and then from the sidewalk to the street, it is in Lakewood right-of-way. So I don't know if they've got any reciprocal maintenance agreements and so forth, but that is an issue and that's one of the reasons it was creative. Staff, we really didn't see this. We were kind of hoping that they would come on the backside with garages for the individual lots versus coming off, so. I am not getting my personal device or the Lakewood website to work on the computer to get zoning. So I am looking at a historic map, which is zoned 2R, which is R1-6 now. So, and in this area, it kind of goes out, we've got 5R to the north, 4R to the south. I'm almost positive that these homes are zoned R1-6 and that's why we ended up with 4, because if it was denser, it was the 4R or 5R, we'd see townhomes or something. So I'll verify that for you, but I can't, they might be maintaining the website now.
Okay. And food for thought for all the commission reacting to Commissioner Furman's thoughts on how aggressive a developer could potentially be squeezing and say six homes in an R1-0 lot where there used to be one home on an R1-6 lot. How do we ensure that courtyard space in the middle of the six homes, we have, you know, three facing the center of the lot, just doesn't all become paved concrete for a driveway going into a garage that's attached to or to the side of each of these units? You know, something like, when someone says a courtyard development and there's, I don't know, grass and flowers or some sort of landscaping, that sounds nice. If it's a courtyard, there's just solid concrete pavement for cars to drive over, that's a much different vibe. There's certainly developments like that, slot home developments. We have a few in Lakewood, there were a lot built in Denver in the last 10 years and those are really townhome products, which are close to R1-0, but maybe, maybe potentially an increment beyond what we want to go to here. And so there's an aesthetics thing that's going to have an acceptance factor, again, I think speaking to the character of the neighborhood, especially if some of these R1-0s do, you know, eventually get a rezoning by whatever process into a neighborhood with, you know, single-family homes that are more of the typology that's consistent in Lakewood today. Yeah, to me, I think we need more thought to make sure that the aesthetics blend in and it just doesn't become a, all concrete in a car sewer.
Commissioner O'Neill.
I think in maintaining open space, it can't be paved, is that correct?
If it is patio space or sidewalk, so it could be hard-surfaced.
Okay, so courtyard technically could be a patio and could be paved entirely, that would be, okay. And then I just had a clarifying question. Commissioner Furman mentioned the six units on a 6,000-square-foot lot in the cottage format, but the cottage, I just want to make sure I'm understanding, R1-0 and cottage zoning are different, is that right? Or is this all meant for cottage zoning?
So when, possibly, it depends on how you write the zone district, I think is the simple answer. Staff never reached that point when we started looking at this. It was a concept that was proposed, the zero lot size came, came up to provide various options and then we never got to the point where we fleshed it out. Is it a detached product on its own lot or do we want to accommodate cottage-type homes? And at the time, everybody was banding about the tiny homes, I forget, you used a separate term as well. Commissioner Furman, there's a whole bunch of different names for those. So that was, that was a topic of discussion as well.
But generally speaking, the R1-0 concept is a single-family residence on a lot that is small enough, but still meets some dimensional requirements and restrictions.
Mm-hmm. I just, in my mind, these were two different zoning types. The cottage zoning to me is a larger lot that is, I envision something more in the co-housing environment where there's a lot of shared open space, shared outbuildings, shared spaces and maybe smaller individual homes, but it's all very characteristic to whatever that development wants to look like. Whereas the R1-0 is a parceled small lot that are individual homes that are sold separately. I think that a cottage development would almost need to be developed that way and then maybe sold that way. I don't, I don't know, I mean, not that we're talking development and sales and all of that, but just running down the logic of that, it seems difficult to envision an aesthetically pleasing tiny lot with a lot of tiny homes on it and then trying to stipulate how much is paved and how much won't be and how much shared space is there. That's a lot to ask, I think, of a neighbor and a neighborhood and they just seem like they're trying to achieve two different things, both housing, but two different types of housing, in my mind. Does, does anyone have any clarification in the, in the way they're thinking about it? Because that's, that's how I've been thinking about it until Commissioner Furman just said the cottage home thing on the small lot and now I'm revisiting it, so I'm just curious of thoughts.
Commissioner Furman.
That was certainly how I was thinking about it initially, what, the way you're describing it, but knowing that we were talking about R1-0.
Yeah.
And so we're talking about taking really any lot, but this was this, sort of I was combining all the conversations and saying how, because the tiny lot, pardon me, the little tiny home village, the cottage concept, especially if we're talking about homeownership, in my mind, still would need to be subdivided into small units that could then be sold. There's probably a number of ways to do that, but, so in my mind, it's still worked with the R1-0 because perhaps the way it's subdivided is the actual lots are subdivided rather than, I mean, obviously there's ways to do it where you don't subdivide a lot, that's a different animal though. But imagining you use the R1-0 to divide any size lot, whether it's the smallest one or a larger one, into small enough parcels. So I guess what I was getting at is what the smallest thing we could do is, because that was where I was trying to understand the sort of, that's as far down as you can go while still, and even then, it's still maintaining the setbacks of the neighborhood on the major sort of lot that was subdivided. I'm not necessarily saying that's the best aesthetic use.
Sure.
But only because what I'm trying to get at is I think there are a lot of iterations and we, I don't know that we'll have the ability to plan for all the iterations and so that, I guess maybe that's the question, is do we plan for the densest iteration possible that still respects neighborhood a little bit? Or, and maybe that's the challenge, I think we have to decide what we're trying to, to some degree, we have to decide what we're planning for because if that's what's going to define these setbacks. I mean, because of, you could get, as you point out with the, the parking thing, we could get rid of the entire front setback, we could get to the point where you allowed a whole sort of eclectic thing going on, but then that also lends itself to the tiny homes. Anyway, I guess what I was getting at is I was trying to imagine the densest thing on the smallest lot that still had some respect for the neighbors. So it's not necessarily an aesthetic judgment and it did, the reason I was using the cottage development was thinking about the zero setback, what could you do with that if you were actually doing sort of party wall situations? But, so I don't know that I'm advocating for that so much as advocating for us to figure out what our, what we're trying to, what we're trying to achieve, I guess.
Yeah. Yep.
And I wasn't suggesting that you were offering that as a solution for a 6,000 square foot lot. I just, when cottage got thrown in there, I was thinking of it differently. And in cohousing developments, where there are all these shared spaces and amenities, they are sold separately. People buy and sell into those, you know, they are their own parcel. There's actually a beautiful one in Golden. So.
Okay. I want to get Commissioner Gribble-Yunis in a second, but do you want to finish up that? Go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, the thing I don't, I mean, because it's not my area of expertise, when you say their own parcel, I mean, I would imagine they could be bought and sold like condos, right? Where you're not owning land, you're buying and selling a unit, but there's some, but, I don't know. I, that's.
Yeah.
All right. Thanks. Commissioner.
And you can continue this. I don't need to jump in right now, if you want. But I find myself trying to plan for the worst case scenario. And worst case is definitely the wrong term to use here. Maybe use the best case. I mean, it's all up to interpretation, right? As soon as we start to get into replating this, I like where you're kind of going, going with the 60 by 100, you know, smallest lot and using that as a, kind of like a template to start to puzzle this around. As soon as you go into replating this, you know, there's not, it's not a guarantee that the primary existing street is going to be the front setback anymore. It depends on how this all gets replatted. And is there a new street that's going to be, you know, going up the center of this lot, potentially serving multiple smaller, we'll call them cottage lots down the side? Now your front setback is rotated 90 degrees, your rear has been rotated 90 degrees and, which is, I think, fine. I think that's where my thought process has gone to in terms of what's the best case use for maximizing out these lots for naturally affordable housing is looking at many different ways of creatively buying a lot. Maybe it is economically viable to buy a single family house, demo it and redevelop it. We just, we just don't know the amount of permutations that would lead to this. But what's difficult here is how do you respect the adjacent lots that are existing R1? And how do you start to plan for what's possible? Part of that could be a two column breakout in the code sheet, but I guess where I go back to is as we're discussing this, finding a way that we can actually visualize and evaluate these different permutations. Unless everyone's following along perfectly with every discussion of the setback that we're talking about here. I guess I'll just leave it there.
Yeah. And of course, that is our challenge, right? In terms of picking a path forward in terms of recommendation. And again, council's asked for a recommendation. Our recommendation could be, we're not in a position to do this at this time, that we need it to be a part of the comprehensive plan. That's an option. It's also an option for us, as we've kind of been talking about, to say, well, we can at least sketch out what this might look like. And it does sound like there's a sense that if you're going to have less than 6,000 square feet, then it also makes sense to make some adjustments, probably in proportion in terms of the other dimensional limitations. And you've also highlighted, I think, in this discussion, that some of those are even harder than others, like the amount of open space. It gets more challenging when you get down to much smaller lot. So I guess I would throw out this question, and because I do want to be respectful of everyone's time. Is this something that we want to continue to discuss this evening? Is it something we would like to pause our discussion and set a further discussion for another future meeting? I would be interested in the commission's preference. Commissioner Buckley.
Thank you. I am open to discussing this, continuing this discussion to a future meeting. It'd be nice to have something new to chew on in advance of that meeting. So we've been talking about having some sort of sketch. Have we said enough, enough specificity, Mr. Rice, where one of your interns could sketch something up of possible permutations of development on a zero lot size, maybe varying some of the other setback standards and so forth that we've talked about tonight, just to, you know, see the range of possibilities. Have you relaxed the open space standard so much, this is what you get? If you relax it less, this is what you get? And how long would that take so that we can see some visual examples?
Right. And I'm not familiar with the software. So he is in on Mondays and Tuesdays. I can ask him next Monday when he's in the office. And then I think the, I have a question, and I have actually two questions. It would be nice to have some dimensions. So do I want to take a lot that's 60 by 100 and then divvy it up into three and then apply the setbacks? And if I do, what are those setbacks? Is it five feet, 20 feet, 10 feet? What are the sides? Do I use three and five and then open space as well? So I can go through and give Avery some direction. It will be completely different than what the commission was expecting. So I need some direction on what am I actually asking him to do? And then the second thing is, when's the next meeting? If it's next week, probably not. So when are, when are we meeting again? So those are my two questions.
It's going to be my suggestion that our next meeting is November 8th. But, you know, I am very sympathetic to this problem because as we look at, I think, all of the commissioners who have expressed particular numbers, we're all trying to do the same thing. We're trying to figure out what would be a reasonable reduction. But we do have a pretty big variance here between what the different numbers have been that have been thrown out. So I would think it would be difficult for us to give at this point you much guidance on that. So I'm not sure we're ready to have it sketched based upon how this discussion has gone thus far. But if someone thinks, if they have a proposal for dimensions and everyone were to agree, that's what we wanted to be sketched out as, then I think we could.
Yeah. It would be more work for the intern doing the sketching, but I would like to see a range of options, right? To me, it's most helpful to see the picture, to see what's possible and to see what's impossible because of various dimensional standards that could be picked. And then within the realm of what's possible, the more subjective judgments of, you know, what's aesthetically pleasing, right? So just as an example of that, if we kept the 50% open space requirement that's in the R16 zone, you're going to be able to, and assuming like a 60 by 100 lot, getting subdivided somehow, but could, no minimum lot size, the end product of the development is going to look a lot different with 50% versus, you know, 25%, which is exactly why I know you're asking for these dimensions. But to me, like, it's helpful to see the difference of like exactly how different it is at 50 versus 25 versus something in between, like 30 or 40. You know, the question then is, how many options do we do? But yeah, it is in seeing the differences between these numerical values that, to me, makes the numerical values real and helps us selecting the appropriate one. And so if it's not too much to ask, maybe, it's going to be multiple options of drawings, right? So I'll suggest zero lot size with a 50% open space, a 40% open space, a 30% open space, a 20% open space. So that's like four different options right there. And I think we, I've heard a lot of consensus on a three foot minimum side setback. I've generally heard consensus on doing something to decrease front setbacks. So let's say that's decreased all the way to five feet. What does that do? Let's say that it doesn't even matter what the minimum setback is, that it's being driven by the desire on a particular lot to have a driveway in front of the house. What does that look like? Versus if there's an opportunity to have a driveway in the back because we can, we have an alley, which is rare in Lakewood, or because we can subdivide it and create an alley. You know, so I think it would be helpful to me if I could see all those options, but I realize that what I just said, there's probably like 10 different things to draw, which just takes longer. But I'm also patient and could wait a month or two to see more options.
Hmm. Okay. Commissioner Gribble-Yunis.
Thank you, Derek Kolkmeier. If it's agreeable with the commission, I'd be happy to put together a few exhibits of potential iterations of a 60 by 100 foot lot with no bias on my own end, but just exploring what could be possible. If at a future session, I could potentially share my screen to put this onto the projector, that would also give us the ability to change some of these setbacks for discussion, to explore some alternate ideas. I'm not saying I'm going to put together 20 iterations of this, but I will definitely be able to put together between three to 10 realistic options that would make a functional site for discussion.
Commissioner Buckley.
Yes, I love that. Let's use the expertise of the architects we have on this commission. Thank you.
Commissioner O'Neill.
And I think that also, I think that also might relieve some of Mr. Rice's trepidation about having my very vague thoughts to provide as direction to an intern. If a commissioner is doing it, then I think we can skip that, which is probably easier for you. And I'll bet you have other work you can find your intern to do anyhow.
Yeah, so I imagine Commissioner Gribble-Yunis can do that in about 15, 20 minutes.
Commissioner O'Neill.
I was just going to suggest, and I don't know that it would need to be a study session, but it's kind of similar to what Commissioner Gribble-Yunis offered, just having geometries to respond to, like, it really could be pretty crude. I don't think it needs to be beautiful, but something that kind of.
It would be.
It would. Perfect. But just, it really is just a response to, like, what is, what is this much, you know, 30% green space look like to this massing? And it's not, and so I guess I was going to ask if the commission would be interested in having a study session about, you know, regarding that and just pitballing ideas and looking at it and overlaying it and whatever, just to sort of, I don't know, suss it out a little bit.
We would be able to, if we want to move in this direction, take consideration or take into account any suggestions live together and work through even new options if we desire, if the commission wants to do that.
Does that have to be a study session? Can that be a, I mean, what is the best format for that? I think it's a great idea. Thank you for offering it.
Yeah. Let's hold that for just a second. Commissioner Furman.
I'll be quick so that you can answer the question. And, because I feel like it's slightly distracting. One, I think it's a good idea. I was thinking myself, I'm happy to draw some things, but I'm just as happy to have you do a bunch and then, and then respond. Then I can, it's easier to be a critic. Now, but the one thing I want to make sure we're doing is achieving something unique with the R10. Because the thing I started, because I was sketching out more ideas again, and the thought that kept coming to mind is, what is the difference between what I'm drawing and changing the zone to a zone that would allow a triplex or a fourplex on it?
Right.
And so I, and this, and so maybe it does want to be a study session or another meeting, but I need to like, either have a conversation with Mr. Rice sometime, or I feel like I need to understand what can't currently be achieved with a zone we have that the R10 is solving. Because I feel like everything I keep drawing is, in some way, could be achieved. And it goes back to the question, when you were talking about, like, why couldn't that be done? What is the R10 solves that can't be solved with a rezone to something that allowed multiple units?
Do you want a quick explanation on that? So the, I'll give the developer, Richmond Homes, came into Lakewood, and they have a product type they were trying to address affordability several years back. And so essentially, think of a townhome and then separate them, right? Put three to six feet between each individual townhome wall. You can get more on a lot. You can drop the price point for kind of entry level, single family homes. And that was the impetus behind this. They were looking at a product type that had its own lot. A lot of citizens still want their own lot, don't want walls, townhome type, and that's where it came from. So they were, they asked to rezone to a zone district we didn't have because they weren't 6,000 square foot lots. Our minimum lot size is 5,000 square feet for a duplex. So they had a product that was quite a bit smaller than that. I think their average lot size was about 3,000 square feet. In the Rooney Valley, they've changed the name so much. Brookfield has product types that are on 3,000 to 4,000 square foot lots. There's, there's a range. I don't know if they've actually got down, but there are single family homes that are on smaller lots, but that's a planned development as well. So that's, that's what we're looking at.
Sorry, I hate to do this. I just wanted to ask, so the key there was that people wanted to own their lot, really is the key, right? Because if you, you could have built those homes on one lot if it had been zoned such that you could have multiple units on it?
Correct.
Okay. Thanks. Sorry. I just wanted.
No, certainly. Commissioner Buckley.
Thank you, yes. And this is similar to my understanding of, you know, why we're talking about this to begin with as well. Like, an impetus is a desire to create more naturally occurring affordable housing that is more likely to be for sale for purchase. You know, when we talk about very different affordability programs, you know, like li-tech credits for a developer, that usually ends up being rental housing. Or, you know, our Housing Authority Metro West is, you know, they're subsidized so their residents can live there at, you know, very low rents, but it's, you know, it's all rent, right? And so the idea is, how do we create something that is an ownership product that is going to be lower cost than, you know, the single family homes we see today, right? I go back to a rezoning we had in Green Mountain by the Swim Club over a year ago, when several of us here were newer on commission, that, you know, the developer in that case said that the housing units would likely be, you know, $800,000 plus, you know, for, and that was putting new homes on a 6,000 square foot lot. And certainly, a lot of that cost is just the minimum lot size, right? If hypothetically, you could build single family detached homes on 3,000 square foot lots and then to 6,000 square foot lots, well, you may not get half the price. I know it doesn't work like that, but you'd probably get something a lot less than $800,000 in today's market, even if you built something that was, I'm throwing out a number, half a million. That's like more attainable than, than the actual single family detached homes that can be built today. You know, we rezoned that development to have just about the smallest lot sizes that are permitted in the city. And that was a relatively rare open tract of land that's left in the city. It was a blank slate, they could do anything. And, you know, that's what they, that's what they got. And that's expensive. And I think the, a key goal of this is that we're trying to create something that is more on the attainable side. I don't know if I want to use the word affordable, it's certainly not, in my vision, I don't think there's an economically feasible way to make like a subsidized affordability program for single family detached homes. I just really am skeptical if the economics were there. But with the right thought, something that's attainable, to a larger percentage of people, and has the benefits of thereby increasing the housing supply and increase housing, increasing housing options, which opens up other existing homes for more people as well. So that's what I want to get out of it, to answer Commissioner Furman's question.
So, to refocus us a little bit, we got a council request. Council request says affordable ownership, smaller lot size. What's your recommendation plan, Commissioner? All we are allowed to do, capable of doing, we cannot change the zoning resolution ourselves. All we are allowed to do, capable of doing, we cannot change the zoning resolution ourselves, or zoning ordinance. We can make a recommendation through a resolution to City Council saying, we've looked at this issue, and we think it is very important that we create additional opportunities for less costly, single-family residences that are smaller, on smaller lots, and therefore more affordable. Once we make that recommendation, if we make that recommendation, then City Council directs the staff to prepare an ordinance, and the ordinance then gets drafted. So I am wondering if maybe we are getting a little bit out of our lane here in terms of coming up with a very precise notion of exactly how the ordinance should be drafted. I'm wondering if the concept is or is not recommended to City Council, and then the Planning Department, which are the professionals, will grapple with some of these issues, and if the City Council decides not to ask them to do that, that's their prerogative. If they decide to make it a high priority, then staff will, I'm sure, do that. But I feel like we're getting a little bit ahead of ourselves because we are not drafting an ordinance. We are drafting a resolution that has recommendations in it. So with that thought, we can go one of two ways. We can continue this discussion and try to really hammer out the specifics, envision all the scenarios, and make a super-specific recommendation to City Council, or we could make a more general one. And either is up to the commission. Commissioner O'Neil.
So I completely agree that we've kind of gotten into the weeds on this one, but I do think that some study is necessary in making a recommendation responsibly. But again, I don't think it's, I don't think it's 10 options. I think it's two or three, and like just percentages of massing versus undeveloped open space on a lot. I think it's difficult to go from 50% or 60% to recommending 20% without taking a look at what those dimensions look like. But I guess, I guess there's also the option of getting very aggressive and then asking, recommending that to City Council, and then asking them to have staff and them figure out what it looks like. But I think if we, if we've been asked to do it because we know what we're talking about, we only know what we're talking about because we know how to study it. So I think we kind of need to study it to make a recommendation personally. But I don't think we need to, I don't think we need 10 options. I think we need, and I don't think we need every single possible scenario. We just need massing and green space, I think.
So, I'm sorry, Mr. Rice.
As you're, as you're talking about examples, I just want to interject. So there's another product that is built, I won't pull it up. Red Tea Homes is the developer. It is, if you go to their website under Homes For Sale, it's 4740 East Mississippi, and it's a single-family home product on a lot. They look good from the street, a little different opinion when you go in the backyard. But it'll give you an example where the building actually takes up most of the lot, and they present well from the front. They don't have front drive, so it's just a good example if the commission wants to take a look at that as well.
Commissioner O'Neil.
I just, what was the address of that? Was it?
4740 East Mississippi Avenue, that's Denver.
Thank you.
Let me ask this question. In terms of the models that we might look at to help us along this way, is, would it make sense to do kind of directly proportional? You take the R1-6, and then we look at it if it's, the, all the dimensional requirements are 75% of the R1-6, and then 50% of the R1-6, then 25%? You know, what I'm suggesting, and since Commissioner Gribble-Yunis, you'd have to sketch this out, is that a way to think about it without introducing too many different variables? We just kind of look at it in proportional steps? If that makes sense, and perhaps it doesn't. So, I mean, the example would be...
No, that is a completely unbiased way just to explore what a reduction in any number of these categories is going to result in. And so the intent of these sketches is not to solve the conversation or the idea, the intent of the sketches is to create conversation and for all of us to better visualize what the implications are, and then make adjustments as required. So I think 75, 50, and 25 as reductions sound great. And it very well could be that a 25% or 75% reduction turns into something that is not workable, but we'll see it.
And I would even suggest, and would be thrilled, if it was all right with the commission, if there are additional scenarios that occur to you that maybe it's just tweaking one or the other, I would love to see it.
Sure.
But just didn't want to turn you loose to not have any direction. Would it be reasonable to suggest that at least three drawings that would be brought to us would be in those kind of step reductions comparative to the R1-6? Does that make sense, or?
And just to clarify, we're just really talking about wholesale reductions across all requirements as a, as a starting point.
I think so, because then we just...
Yeah.
We just respond to it. I mean, then we just have a conversation around it. It's not, it's not solidified.
Yeah. That sounds great.
On the issue of study session or not, I think I've already kind of shown my hand on that, which is, I'm not a big fan of study sessions. If it is the consensus of the commission that we want to do it in a study session, I just don't know what the virtue of a study session is versus a regular meeting. The only difference is that a regular meeting, folks that may be interested in that subject matter get an opportunity to comment. So I see it as a better forum. It may be a little more difficult for staff to have us in here, but I, my preference is always to do it in a regular meeting for that reason. There may be members of the public that say, I hear you're looking at R1-0, and I have some things to say about that, rather than a study session. Is there any, Commissioner Buckley?
Yeah, I concur with that logic for having a regular meeting, and depending on how the situation goes, if, like we showed last time with the ADU discussion and earlier tonight as well, if we feel like there's a consensus developing to make a motion to direct us in some direction afterwards, a meeting has the virtue of providing that clear direction by the outcome of the vote on the motion, which I like too. And sometimes in the past, when we've just been discussing things as a group in a study session, it's not really clear afterwards what the consensus of the group was, or if there was one. With a vote, you know how it went.
So without objection, we're going to send Commissioner Gribble-Yunis out to do some additional work for us, and we will hold this discussion for a future meeting date. Is it possible that it could even be discussed on November 8th?
Yes.
With that, I'm going to move to item five, approval of the minutes from 4/19/2023. And I understand that there were some changes to the minutes, and everyone should have I would entertain a motion to approve those corrected minutes for April 19th, February, March, April, yes, April 19th, 2023.
I move the adoption of the minutes of our April 19th, 2023 meeting as amended.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Those minutes are approved. Item number six, general business. Does anyone have any general business that they would like the commission to discuss? And I would simply mention that we have the 40 West Arts Group making a presentation to us. I had hoped that maybe we could push them up to November 1st, but they would like to come November 8th. So my suggestion is going to be that we cancel the November 1 regular meeting and instead schedule a regular meeting for November 8th. And at that meeting, we would have the 40 Arts, 40 West Arts presentation. Potentially, we'll be looking at a final resolution on the ADU issue and potentially further discussion on the R1-0. So I would invite a motion pursuant to Articles 5.2 and 5.3 of our Rules and Regulations to cancel the Planning Commission's regular meeting for November 1st, 2023, and instead schedule a special regular meeting for November 8th at 7:00 PM. Commissioner Furman?
So moved?
Yes. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion passes. Item number seven, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. I assume there's no discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, we are adjourned. Thank you all.